Any board to order? Today's March 21st, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Start with a roll call from the far end.
Town Planner.
Marty Kane.
James Levin.
Paul Green.
Tom McGinn.
Susan Roth.
I'm Rich Canong, the Chair. We do have a quorum.
Aye.
So on the agenda today, we have approval of the agenda. We have approval of the minutes of March 7th, 2023. We have a space for public comment. We have public hearings. The first public hearing is Timber Frames by R.A. Kraus, a site plan review. The second public hearing is J.J.WZ LLC, a site plan review. There are two pending applications, one for Timber Frames and one for J.J.WZ. We have one new application, Westfield Incorporated, along with CL Properties LLC, Corsi Holdings LLC, and Martin Kane with a zoning request. And then we have some other business from the town planner. And when we're done, we're going to go home. Hopefully, short and sweet.
With approval.
Aye.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Marty Kane, to approve the agenda as written. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anybody abstaining? No. Okay. Just checking to make sure. Approval of the minutes for March 7th, 2023.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Paul Green, to accept the minutes of 2023 as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have four in favor and one abstention. Two abstentions. Okay. Jamie and Tom. Moving on to public comment. This is that section of the meeting. If you're a member of the public and you have a comment about something that is not on the agenda, now is the time to talk. Yes, sir. Please, please use the microphone. State your name. You may have to. Hello?
Yes, my name is Alan Anzarella. I'm a Rundle resident. I own just shy of five acres in a Rundle. And I'm building a garage, AD, a garage with an ADU above it on my existing property. On the property, there's our home, which is a, just a dwelling. And under the current guidelines of the town, I have to tap into my existing septic system for an ADU apartment. And it is just going to be a crazy logistical nightmare between the ledge to, to tap into the leach field and then to expand the leach field. I have sort of a little drawing here made up, but I have the site cleared out. And there's a, I have a beautiful soil test and an area for a, just a gravity-fed septic system next to the garage ADU. And under the current guidelines for ADU apartments in a Rundle, I have to tap into the existing. And just to give, I don't know, anyone? Can really.
Let me interrupt you. This is not the time to be making a presentation about what you want to do.
Okay.
If you want, we can set this on the agenda. But this will require town meeting vote to change the ordinance.
Yes, that's, I guess that would be my request. And I'm under the understanding that possibly in the summer with the state laws, there will be some changes made. So I'm just trying to.
But we will be discussing changes to our ADU ordinance based upon what the state law is going to say. So I think at that point, watch the agenda and come in. And we can discuss that more thoroughly. But to make a presentation right now is, it's the wrong time. This is for, for, for the public comment. It's things that you want to see, things that we should be looking at.
Okay, I'll make it short and sweet. I would like to, at some point, bring up to the agenda that the ADU laws would be helpful to be, you know, discussed and changed at some point in the near future.
And what kind of a change are you looking?
I would just like to put in a regular septic system next to the
Okay.
ADU instead of spending $20,000 and drilling and possibly blasting and, you know, totally wrecking my property to just connect to an existing septic that needs to be enlarged.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, because I did have conversation with Mr. Zerillo, is that our current ADU regulations, as well as what's being proposed with minor changes to it to meet the LD 2003 section of the state law, we, our ordinance requires that one septic system in Leach Field be on the property. And Mr. Zerillo is looking to have you amend that ordinance when it comes forward that would allow for two septic systems so that the home would be on one and the ADU would be on a separate one.
Right. And just to refresh the board's memory and, and let the applicant know, this was originally done because we don't want the property to be split in any way. If you're in, if you're in a, an R1 or an R2, if you have a sep- separate septic system on that property, you could theoretically appeal to the town to split it. And we did not want that happening. Because the ordinance calls for one dwelling place per lot.
Yes. I mean, my, my personal, I'm never looking to split that. That's just my personal, I'm not, you know, whatever that means to you guys, but yeah. I have just shy of five, 4.85.
Yeah.
Uh, R2. Yep.
Yep. Okay.
All right. Thank you very much for your time.
And yeah, keep watching the agenda. We'll get, we'll be discussing the ADU at some point in the not-too-distant future.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, at this point, it is 7:08. I'm going to open the first public hearing. Timber Frames by R.A. Kraus Site Plan Review, A Proposal to Create a Five-Acre Lot From an Existing 22-Acre Lot to Locate a Timber Frame Manufacturing Business. The property is located on Portland Road on MAP 12, Lot 6, in the BI Zone. Richard Kraus is the owner-applicant, Paul Gadboy PE is the applicant's agent. Does anybody from the public have any questions about this particular item? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing at 7:09. And we will open up the J.J.WZ LLC Site Plan Review, A Proposal to Import 2,000 Cubic Yards of Fill Onto His Property Located at 30 Log Cabin Road, Tax Map 39, Lot 40A, in the TC Zone. J.J.WZ LLC is the owner-applicant represented by Robert Zook. And Paul Gadboy PE is the applicant's agent. And again, does anybody from the public have any comments or questions? Hearing none. I'll close the the public hearing at 7:09. And we'll move on to pending applications, Timber Frames by R.A. Kraus. Does the board have any comments or questions for the applicant? Yes, sir.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, just one comment because you had asked for follow-up during the sketch or the initial review of the application. The Fire Chief is out on leave. And you wanted something from him on review. I did ask Deputy Chief Reynold Tariff to do a review. He reviewed the application and felt comfortable with the site layout for being able to accommodate fire equipment. His concern at this point is simply that he can't review any internal fire, whether it's sprinkler systems or how they're going to protect the building since there is no building permit proposed at this time. But I did want to convey that he was fine with the way the site is laid out and can accommodate fire equipment.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone have any comments?
On that, it, I think it, all we're concerned is the site. So if he approves, it has no problem, then, then I think we'd be good.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
AJ, wouldn't the Fire Chief get a shot at that while they get the building permit?
Um, I'm not sure what his timing for return is. So, but yes, when it's time for a building permit, they do get, they do get a look at it because of life safety codes. Absolutely.
I will add that it just happens to be a fire hydrant right out front. So it couldn't be better than in this location.
Exactly.
Question.
Yeah, Marty.
Uh, since this is a timber frame and it's not a normal stick-built house or building, does sprinkler system still come into the effect on this? Because this is something we have not dealt with.
That would be up to the applicants, between the applicant, the chief, and the codes enforcement officer.
I'm just throwing that out as a possible question for them to throw out instead of being stick-built.
Right. The, the only time that we require sprinklers is in new subdivisions that are not HUD-approved?
Okay. That, yes, that is correct. That is what we require them. If the applicant chose to go that route, understand sprinklers are not meant to completely suppress fires, but knock them down enough for the fire department to get there and do their job.
But there's no building yet.
Right. We can't, we can't look at it. Okay. Any other questions for the applicant on this one? Okay. Yep.
The notice of decision. Hold on.
All right. So Paul, and I think we talked about this on the site walk this week. On here, it says that you were gonna have a pond, stormwater pond. And you guys did a further review, I believe, and you didn't believe that was necessary.
Yes, I did the pre-imposed hydrocata calculations. And this site, it's kind of a no-brainer, but I have to do the calculations to prove that it works. So when I do the pre-imposed development calculations, my calculations show that this wetland right here, which is, I think it's in my cover letter, approximately three acres.
Yep.
It raises the water level for 25-year storm event by, I think, creates of an inch.
Okay.
From there across is under Technology Drive to another large wetland conflict. So I didn't even analyze it even further. That would probably raise that an eighth of an inch. And then from there goes another 10-acre large wetland. So in my cover letter, I basically said it won't have any downstream impacts.
Yeah. All right.
And maybe my timing isn't right here, Mr. Chairman.
No, that's okay, because.
It's a note, so I want to make sure it doesn't stay on there and then they're tied to something. That's all.
Paul, please refresh my memory. What was the, what was the rough overall limit of development there, size-wise?
Impervious area, I mean?
Sure.
Area of the ground is 2,004 square feet.
Yeah.
Building 6,000 and the access 24,000. And in the packet, he's required to submit a a permit to DEP prior to construction because we're over an acre disturbed.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I'll, I'll be able to amend that comment for the board if they approve this, this evening and go through the notice of decision. And it's not on the signature page, so you will be able to sign it as well.
Great. Okay, notice of decision, site plan review. Timber Frames by R.A. Kraus, US Route 1, Tax Map 12, Lot 6, in Rundle, Maine. The applicant and his representative, Paul Gadboy, were in front of the board for a sketch review September 6th, 2022. At that meeting, the board went over the concept plan and discussed several issues with the client. The applicant submitted the site plan review application on January 30th, 2023. The applicant appeared before the planning board on February 21st, where the application was found complete. And the date for both the site, site walk, March 18th, and the public hearing have been set for March 21st. Criteria for, for approval. All site plan review applications shall be evaluated and approved, approved with conditions or denied based on the following findings of fact. Number one, the proposed project conforms to all standards of the zoning district and meets or exceeds performance standards specified in Sections 5, 9, and 10 of this ordinance. The application would not appear before the planning board if the above noted standards had not been met. Number two, the proposed project has received all applicable federal and state permits. The main DOT has signed off on the access permit for the applicant. The permit requires that the access point be a right-in, right-out limited access permit. Number three, the proposed project does not unreasonably impact public safety and fire protection and will not create a financial burden for the town of Arundel in the provision of emergency services and law enforcement to the project site and the neighborhood. The applicant has proposed to utilize an onsite well, which will also provide fire protection even with public water located along Route 1. The circulation around the site has been reviewed by the deputy fire chief and found to be acceptable. Number four, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon the quality of surface or groundwater resources. The site is located off Route 1 in an area zone to have, zoned to accept large commercial developments. All erosion and sediment control measures have been appropriately taken. Number five, the project provides adequate stormwater management facilities to produce no additional peak runoff during this, from the site during the 25-year storm event and will not have an undue impact on municipal stormwater facilities or downstream properties.
So I would propose in there, Mr. Chairman, that the, it would state that the applicant will not be required to construct any additional stormwater ponds.
Okay. Everybody happy with that?
Yeah.
Number six, the proposed project will not have an adverse onsite or offsite impact upon existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems within the community or neighborhood. The main DOT has issued a permit for the access. No other concerns have been raised regarding vehicular and pedestrian circulation. Number seven, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, marine resources, important cultural resources, or visual quality of the neighborhood, surrounding environs, or the community. None have been identified by, by the applicant or the, or the beginning with habitat data for the community. Number eight. Number seven, what does that mean?
It just means that, well, beginning with habitat is a series of maps that the state provides. And they show whether or not there's deal wintering yards and other critical resources. And they have not identified any in that area.
Okay. Thank you. I have no idea what it was.
Maybe we can do a workshop on it one night. I can walk you through it all.
The proposed project will not produce noise, odors, dust, debris, glare, solar obstruction, or other nuisances that will adversely impact the quality of the life of surrounding parcels. None have been identified during the review process. Number nine, the proposed project will not have a negative fiscal impact on municipal government. The project is a low-impact development with no infrastructure needed. Based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the site plan review request with the following conditions. Compliance with all written materials submitted as part of this application, so approved by the Arundel Planning Board this date, March 21st, 2023.
Will move to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth, to approve. Any, any debate? Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
And on to the next one. Oh, no, Paul can't leave yet. He's still up on the next one. Item number two, J.J.WZ LLC Site Plan Review. Does the board have any questions for the applicant? Nope.
Nothing.
No questions?
No.
Okay. Hearing none. Notice of decision for site plan review, J.J.WZ LLC, 30 Log Cabin Road, Tax Map 39, Lot 40A, Arundel. Applicant, uh, application prepared by Paul Gadboy, P.O. Box 327, Saco, Maine. The applicant submitted the request for site plan review on February 2nd, 2023, and first appeared before the planning board for completion on March 7th, 2023. All site plan review applications shall be evaluated, approved, approved with conditions or denied based upon the following findings of fact. The proposed project conforms to all standards of the zoning district and meets or exceeds all performance standards specified in Sections 5, 9, and 10 of this ordinance. All performance standards have been met. B, the proposed project has received all applicable federal and state permits. Yes, which includes basic main DEP tier permit for the wetland fill. Item C, proposed project does not unreasonably impact public safety and fire protection and will not create a financial burden for the town of Arundel in the provision of emergency services and law enforcement to the project site and the neighborhood. No. D, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon the quality of surface or groundwater resources. No structures are proposed, no septic system is proposed at this time that would impact groundwater. Item E, the project provides adequate stormwater management facilities to produce no additional peak runoff from the site during a 25-year storm event and will not have an undue impact on municipal stormwater facilities or downstream properties. The applicant has requested and was granted a waiver of the stormwater requirements at this time since the site is only having fill placed on it. Future development will require a stormwater analysis. F, the proposed circulation will not have an adverse onsite and offsite impact upon existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems within the community. No development is proposed at this time. G, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, marine resources, important cultural resources, or visual quality of the neighborhood, surrounding environs, or the community. The site has been previously developed with a duplex house located on it. The applicant has provided data from U.S. Fish and Wildlife that indicate that no resources in this area will be harmed. There are no wildlife resources on that piece of property. How could you harm them? H, the proposed project will not produce noise, odors, dust, debris, glare, solar obstruction, or other nuisances that would adversely impact the quality of life of surrounding parcels. The placement of fill on this site will not have any impact on the above standards. J, the proposed project will not have a negative fiscal impact on municipal government. This project does not require any municipal support. Based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the site plan review request with the following conditions. Per Article 10, Section 10.7, the applicant must submit a performance guarantee acceptable to the planning board, to the planning department prior to the commencement of any site activity associated with this approval. Number two, compliance with all written materials submitted as part of this application, so approved by the Arundel Planning Board this March 21st, 2023. Comments, questions? Your move, gentlemen.
Your approval.
No, second.
Motion made by Marty Kane, seconded by Paul Green to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
I still don't know how you can have wildlife on a property. It's
It's got some plants.
You know, some, some of the conditions just seem odd. Okay. New applications. Westfield Incorporated, along with CL Property LLC, Corsi Holdings LLC, and Martin Kane. A zoning change request.
I'm done. I have to vote the other side twice.
I would have gotten there, but after I finished. The applicants have petitioned the town of Arundel to request a zoning map amendment to change a portion of MAP 29, lots 19 and 20, and MAP 34, lots 7, 8, and 9, to decrease the DB1 zone to a depth of 168 feet along the frontage of those parcels, with the remaining land of those parcels to be rezoned to the DB2 zone. David Gould of Westfield Incorporated is the representative for the application.
Sorry, it's me.
Okay.
My name's Elizabeth Gould. I'm representing my daddy. Can't be here tonight. This is his baby, but I'm going to do my best to try and explain what it's all about. So, um, never done this before. Correct me if you have questions or whatever. Oh, thank you. You're gonna let me use it? Thank you. I'll do my best. Thank you for the opportunity to present our proposal for a zoning change at the rear of our properties on Route 1, as well as our neighbors. Our neighbors are Marty Kane, and my apologies. We included his home in the packet that you got. It was supposed to be just his shop. So please disregard that piece. Terrapin Landscape and Champion Auto. I am Elizabeth. I'm David's daughter. We own a family business called Westfield and have owned 1512 Portland Road since 2006. We purchased later Buddy Emmons, a budding property, and I think that was in 2014, and have been waiting for an appropriate time to convert and improve the properties to higher and better uses. Since the business purchased these properties, there have been changes in zoning along the stretch of Route 1. I believe the intent being to create a more village-like feel for the area. We can certainly appreciate the value of the objective. And I can see from the list of permitted uses between the two downtown business zones here that there have been a lot of thought put into the development of this area along Route 1. I don't know how familiar you both are. I tried to familiar, you all are, tried to familiarize myself with the permitted uses. It just looks like uh, much more restricted in DB1 to create the village use and then more permitted uses, a little more flexible in DB2. Which, here. Wait, this dotted line here, maybe two, and here, and all along here. Okay. Um, we're looking to address the inconsistency in the depth of downtown business zone 1. You look at where it starts over here and where it ends up here. It ranges from about 159 feet to 600 feet. And we're proposing that the distance from Route 1 or DB1 end at its current closest point. So you have this in your packet. But this here is 1492 Portland Road, which is Buddy Emmons' house and shop. What was I gonna say? The 158.75 feet, which I guess is the closest that it gets to Route 1, runs down the back of his property, about 80 feet behind his buildings. So that's kind of this big. So it's not right on his, right on the building line. It's behind that. This property that he used was for his primary residence, as well as his auto showroom. Also wanted to note that this encompasses all the buildings on Lot 8, MAP 34, and 80 feet behind it. We hope you'll agree that this setback from Route 1 would be most adequate to meet Arundel's desire for village-like architecture and its uses on this quarter. I don't want to assume, but given the recent expansion of the three-phase power along Route 1 in this area, it leads me to believe that Arundel wants more development along the corridor in this area. It certainly makes it easier for small businesses to develop and thrive now that the resources like electricated, upgraded electrical and town water are available to support the potential growth in the DB2 zone if our proposal for expansion is approved. Um, I also felt it was important to note that the expansion of the downtown business zone 2 doesn't bring it any closer to the homes behind us. It would only move it to a fixed distance from Route 1, which we're proposing is the closest area there, about 158 feet. We'd appreciate your support. So I'll do my best to answer any questions, and I think that's it.
You understand this will require a town meeting approval to make this change?
Yep.
And I don't think we have enough time to get it on the agenda. We have until the end of April to get it to the, to the town manager for approval.
So, Mr. Chairman, um, in working with the applicant and so diligently had been working with me so that if you were to, um, set a public hearing date, which is really what your prime, um, decision-making is for this, that if you were to set it for April 4th, the advertisement and everything would be ready to go in, and that would provide time eventually if the select board were to move on it, to put it on the agenda for town meeting.
It actually is already posted. Oops.
Hmm?
I said I accidentally already posted it. I said I accidentally already posted it saying it's April four. Okay. Yeah, sorry. I did that yesterday.
Yes.
Okay.
That's fine. That's fine.
Sorry.
Um, I might also give you some additional information because we did work, um, and have several meetings with the prime petitioner of this. The reason it looks the way it does is twofold. One is where that dip comes down. The intent originally was to carry that line um, along that location as well for uniformity and tie it back in, but that landowner, um, I guess chose not to participate as the others have. The other issue is that it was my desire, um, in bringing this forward from the applicant to try and maintain that D B one corridor, um, added depth that was still, um, um, adequate for any development in the D B one zone. The difference, the prime difference between D B one and D B two is that in D B one, there are performance standards relevant to the look and feel of buildings and structures that go in that area. And again, that's why we wanted to try and keep any rezoning to further back off the road. And the D B two, many of the uses are similar, but there are not as many performance standards for structure, for the look of the structure. Um, so we wanted to, or at least I as staff wanted to make sure that we maintain some sort of buffer and continuity for D B one along the corridor.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any comment? Paul?
So is the intention to keep the same distance all the way along? Or is it just gonna be those lots that are identified here?
Just those lots that are identified there because the other, um, where this is a, a um, a private, I call it a petition, a private request. Um, the other, any other property owners along there would need to, would need to have stepped forward with, with this group, um, and say that they would be willing to participate and no others did.
Anybody else?
I will make one other comment because I know the chairman asked the question of me um, at the last meeting about the petition process, an actual petition process, and did some great research and went back and found that, I think it was in two thousand twenty, um, that part of the ordinance was amended and that language requiring is a petition process was deleted. So therefore, that's why we're at where we're at today, where it can be a personal request coming forward for a map change.
Okay.
So one, one thing that sticks out to me is the owner, I think it's a lot, is it? Eight, the small, almost square lot, yeah, where that the very rear of that parcel is being integrated into the, the, or, or proposed to be integrated into the D B.
Yeah, I don't think that was really, I, I won't speak for the applicant, but the intent would have been to carry it right along the back of that line. It wouldn't to, wouldn't be to include that because again, there's, I believe there's wording somewhere in the ordinance that says that, you know, if a portion of the parcel is that zoning, then it would need to, it could only be carried forward if it were a major portion of that property. Maybe I'm in the wrong town. I apologize if I am.
I think it was just consistency.
Yeah.
Is that property owner been contacted about this?
That is ours. That I believe right here, thirty-four lot eight, that's Buddy Emmett's property that we purchased in two thousand fourteen.
Okay, that is true.
Yep. And then, um, this one behind thirty-four lot nine is also ours. That's where we have our workshop.
It's, is there any reason why, uh, was that your intent to have it go along the back of that lot? Cause it does seem to create a non-conforming area right there.
Weird little strip, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I, what I heard is that it was for consistency to keep it at the closest spot it is and move it straight across the line. So I don't think that that was contemplated as far as I know.
Well, so how do you come up with the closest spot?
Right here.
Oh.
That's measured, um, I believe. He said, we're proposing the distance from Route One to the rear of the D B one zone be established at the current closest point, one hundred and fifty-eight point seven five. As a reference point, this depth would extend nearly to the property line of map thirty-four lot eight, which is.
Well.
So if you run this line here, that's where that corner is.
And, and certainly, um, after we have the public hearing, if, when the board is making the recommendation to the select board, um, for them to carry it forward, if you have any changes or issues um, relevant to adjusting that line in any way, you can make that recommendation.
Okay. And I, I probably would lean to it personally go, going that rather than pick, um, an arbitrary point, really just happens to be the back of, of that other property was, is a hundred and sixty-eight feet. But then it creates an issue with part of your lot being split, so, um, the thing would be cleaner, just have it run right along the back of your property.
I assume David would be open to that. I'm just, I don't want to speak for him. He's not here. Yeah.
Fifteen feet, so maybe it's not, wouldn't be a big deal.
Yeah, it might accomplish the same goal.
Okay.
The lots that are in front that are on the D B one now, are they all owned by the same people? That, that are proposing this move?
Yes.
So they're gonna split their lots into two different zones?
Yes.
That was the reason this line was drawn?
Yes.
So that all of the property stayed in the D B one or all of the property was in D B two, not a portion of it.
Wow.
And Marty understands that because he was on the board when it did it. So I have a problem with the letter that he signed that says he didn't know anything about it, but he was on the board when we did this.
It, the, the way it's, it's currently, uh, split, it, it, they, all of those properties are split anyways.
Yeah, they are.
They weren't supposed to be.
Still the same property.
You're already in two properties now, so, right, I, I agree. It's one property, but you're in, in two different zones, I should say. That's what I meant.
This is where it exists now.
Yeah, they weren't.
These properties.
They weren't, they weren't supposed to be. That's, that was the way Tad presented it to us. Because we were, because we were trying to follow the property lines so that we had everything in, in the same zone and didn't split it up between different zones.
But it is correct.
Oh, I have no idea.
It looks like it is on the map.
Well, I, I will say that, that if all the property owners in that area, all are in agreement, then it, it seems to make sense to me. It's not that big of, of of a difference. It's still, the D B one still would be along, right along the road.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think it makes a great difference, but that was.
You have, you have a certain intent at the time, yes.
Stuff that happened before I was here, yes.
Yeah, yeah, probably it's.
In, in order to maintain the consistency along that, that front and not have that uh, what I would consider an odd jog right there by coming up to the south of your property, Marty, right, yeah, right where you're pointing. What, what ability do we have as a planning board to say we would prefer to see that line, you know, cut straight across to that, that one reference point, that, that angle right there, yep, that.
We, we could make that recommendation to the selectmen.
Yep. Just for consistency along that stretch.
You mean to run this from there to there?
Correct. Yes, you as a board have that ability to make that recommendation.
I'd be interested in hearing, if we're gonna go that way, hearing from those property owners, cause if, if they're in opposition.
As far as I know, we have not heard from them. It's not an opposition. We just weren't able to get response.
Who was it?
Um, these guys here, but they're out of state, I believe. I don't know who they are.
Now, where am I? You said the number.
Right next to you.
It was just up to you, Marty. I'm trying to think of the people.
So they will be, of course, notified as part of the public hearing process. Um, and, um, if I can with Ian's help, if we can track those folks down, we can contact them specifically to, um, see what their concerns, issues or thoughts may be on there.
Okay. Linda, you had a comment?
Yeah, um, so off the right across the street, so running an hour and then line goes pretty close to. Wasn't supposed to, I was on the economic development business as well, and it was supposed to go up the property line. I had no idea what happened. How they got it all switched, but I know that the zone I bear is like, well, I'm split now, it wasn't really, I don't know, and here's what I mean. And what I'm gonna say is, yeah, they, they split us, um, and the property that we own next door is probably gonna be a problem too because of the zone that's in, we have decided to do something with it. I just don't understand the way that with the existing businesses that are there now and people wanting to do things away from the other apartment, couldn't there be something more like the contract selling down there for many of our people wanting to do because it, I know that when they originally made these changes, they had to go to the people that were formerly existing and work around them. So now we've worked around that, there were new people coming in and then now they want, you know, I mean, what about, I mean, do we do not do contract zoning in the town? Do we not have any interest in doing any contracts zoning in the town? It was all a problem, I think.
So.
I, I think the, I think the problem with contract zoning is that it's very subjective to who's on the board. If they like you, they'll give it to you. If they don't like you, you're out of luck.
Yeah, so we, we, we do not do contract zoning right now in the ordinance. Um, it would, I'd, I'd have to look at the current comprehensive plan and see if there's any recommendations to suggest we do that. Um, and then it would be quite a process to develop the, just the language to even allow contract zoning to occur.
I just know that, so that area is, I mean, they originally do want, I mean, the car dealership, they have a car dealership that's hot, I'm gonna go look.
Now, if there's enough interest going forward, you know, we can always develop contract zoning language, but just to even allow contract zoning, the languages, it would be, um, quite a process. Never mind to then get to a point where we're going to negotiate and develop a contract for somebody. Um, but that's for the you folks and others to tell me what we want to do.
Okay.
In this case, it's a lot easier to move the line.
Yeah, yes, it is.
I would agree.
It's a lot easier to move the line.
Yeah.
It would be at least a year before we got it to town board. Yeah.
So all you folks need to do tonight is set the date for the public hearing and.
It can't get up the height.
Do you want to have a public hearing on the fourth?
I have one other question, if that's all right. Uh, it would, in general, I know you may not be able to get into specifics. What are the overall goals of your, you know, you, you and your father's company for the, the zone change?
I think it was mostly consistency and flexibility to find the best use for the property, and it's a little restrictive right now with, um, the D B one zoning on being so deep.
Yep. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, um, the chair. I hate this thing.
Okay.
Okay, I have a question for Linda. So in a perfect world, when you built the car dealership, would it have been more advantageous and would it have made it easier for you to grow your business if you were in one zone? Or is there an advantage to the split? I mean, has it been a frustrating?
It has been. Yeah, a problem with split, yeah.
So there's, there's no necessarily, there's not a big drawback to having.
Well, we haven't really done anything that would, you know, still car dealership, still.
Right, but if, if, for instance, you wanted to do something with that is, I would imagine that there's an advantage to having the back property in a D B two because it doesn't have the restrictions of what's along Portland Road and the D B one.
But it's this way. When you're thinking of Linda and growing the business or starting, we only had one dump. There was, there was nothing else. With HC one, definitely like, and it went originally back twelve hundred feet. Okay, then everybody decided to get a little more fancy or, or a little bit more of this, that, and the other. Then they went to change it into different subs because what they tried to do was we could print what you could put in D B one, what you could put in D B two. Because actually along that lines and everything else, you came across that no more automobiles.
Marty, it, it, it's, it's a balance that we've tried to pull off and, and there's many things that are easier to do in the D B one. There's, there's less of a, of a, a setback. I think it's with the twenty feet instead of fifty feet, so it, so you can actually have a lot of uses there that wouldn't be allowed if it was, if it was the way the HC one was. So there's, so there's a trade-off. Some things, uh, uh, might feel more restrictive. Other things are, are much looser. So it depends on what you want to do. And, and so which begs the question, what, what is there that you'd like to do that you can't do right now?
I, I don't think there's anything, go ahead.
You want to be careful about talking about uses as it relates to rezoning. Um, good question, but I think they gotta, if, if they're gonna answer, I would suggest it's gotta be very general because you can't tie any rezoning to a particular development.
Right. The discussion of rezoning sounds too much like a contracting.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So you don't have to answer that question.
Well, good, because I just got to dance a little bit.
Well, I just wanna, I, I'm just curious, not just for this one property owner, but, but all of them involved here. Uh, what are they restricted? What are the restrictions that um, are in the way now that that by changing it, then you'll be able to do?
Um, yeah, I just was looking at these lists here. And they're definitely very different. There's a lot of things.
D B one.
Automobile.
D, D B one does not. D B two does.
So they're in the packet here. And there's certainly really big difference, but automobile's the biggest one, I would say. Absolutely nothing in D B one related to automobiles.
Great.
Okay. And any more questions by the board? Shall we move it on to a public hearing?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion. We, uh, have public hearing on April fourth is the next one.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth to hold a public hearing on April fourth to, and, and then we'll move it on to the Board of Selectmen with a recommendation when we have them. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Marty, you can come back and join us on this side of the fence.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda.
You have one?
Planner's report.
Oh, planner's report. Okay, well, um, as part of the planner's report, the language that we've been all, all, what's the word I'm looking for? Alluding, um, that we discussed several months ago is, is on the actual agenda um, for your bylaws. Um, there was a, an opportunity to look for a change in the bylaws um, requiring no less than seven calendar days prior to the meeting for the applicant to provide any materials, so they're not providing it during the meeting um, or the day before the meeting, but they have to get it to us seven days prior to. So that was the added language in that section of the bylaws. And I just want to get you folks to vote on that so that we can put it into the actual document.
Okay.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, what is your pleasure?
So I move that we vote on the change as explained by Lee Jay.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Jamie to accept the, the motion as written. Any discussion? Hearing on those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous.
Great, thank you. So the other thing, um, it was just. things just are going fine, um, within the department, um. I think there's been a little bit of a slowdown, which has been good, and we're, you know, coming into coming into town meeting, uh, part of the season, so, um, we're, we're in a good place within the department. Um, the other thing I don't normally like to talk about, but I will, um, let you know tonight, that, um, I have had the good fortune. I will be here for you guys, don't worry, I'm not going down a road of disappearing, but I have had the good fortune of being nominated by the governor to be on a commission as a commissioner for the redevelopment land bank authority, which is a brand-new commission being, um, started at the state level. And my confirmation hearing is on Friday, um, and a vote on the Senate floor next Tuesday. Um, there are nine of us in the state that have been, um, recommended by the governor for this, for, for staffing this commission.
So are, are you saying we should show up and stack the meeting?
Please do, please do. No, no, I would never, I would never. There is actually comment opportunities available on Friday morning, um, or written material submitted by Thursday afternoon. Um, but, so, yeah, thank you, um. It's, it's a little intimidating, um, as I've told people in my office. Um, I've gone to the, gone to legislature a hundred times and testified on, on legislation, but uh, I'm really nervous about this. It's different when you're going there to, uh, seek, seek approval of, of a committee to be nominated for a a commission, but, um, once I can get over the hump on Tuesday with the Senate vote, I'll feel much better. Thank you, thanks.
So Lee J, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Okay, so with these split lots, and not to discuss Westfield or whatever, but just in general, in other towns, I can understand wanting, wanting to keep the view from the road at a certain level and then giving more flexibility to development in the rear.
Yep.
So is this something that's commonly occurs in other towns? Or are lots generally one zone or another?
No, um, it's, it's. It, it's common, it's common, um. A lot of towns have it that way. Again, I, and I can't remember, um, here if we do it that way or not. But there are towns that say if more than half of the lot is in one zone, then that zone, um, would dominate the entire property. Um, other towns don't have that language and it's split zoning, and, you know, you can only do what you can do for that zone. Um, some towns, this, this situation is a little different, um, I mean, I inherited it, um, coming in here. But having, uh, like a DB one along the, the front and then a DB two, um, behind it is very different because they are still somewhat similar in nature to what they are, but, you know, I mean, it can work. Um, and I think in some cases, you know, we'll probably see something happen down the road that was allowed, that is allowed in DB two, but not allowed in DB one. Um, which is always a possibility.
Yeah, that's why I asked Linda that question, because they own so much land behind it.
Right.
That they might wanna do something completely different and not wanna be governed by what has to take place in the DB one.
And, and quite frankly, um, while it might be a huge task at some point in the future, that might be something you folks want to tackle and take a look at as a board is, you know, do you wanna rezone that corridor or blend DB one and DB two into one zone that would work for everybody? Um, there's all kinds of options out there, but, but what you have right now is not, um, different than other towns have had to deal with as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, question for us. Along the way, we got food season coming up. Can we request that possibly the selectmen, when they turn around and have applicants for food trucks, say for in town of Arundel, if they wanted to have like a multiple site instead of having the vendor apply for just one spot, I'm thinking of like, uh, for an example, we have a food court now with three in it, they're established there. But if we have other trucks or other applicants that wanna come into town for different events throughout the summer, instead of them having to get a new license for every time to have it location along the way, it's something. I mean, because you might have a vendor come in and it's gonna do a wedding, and it's the only time he's in town. Or you might have the same vendor who might do a wedding one week in town, and then the next week he might be at the theater. As long as where the town office notified, I mean, uh.
No, we have, we have no jurisdiction.
No, that's why I'm saying, I know we don't have any jurisdiction.
And I would say you as a citizen could go to the Board of Selectmen, but we as a planning board would be completely out of order to do so.
Can we ask the selectmen?
It would not be appropriate for us as a planning board to ask them. That is their ordinance. If you wanna go talk to them and say, I think this is what should happen, then that would be acceptable. But for us as a board to do so would be inappropriate. Yeah, I, I agree with you as well. I think it would be a great idea. It's just inappropriate for us as a board. That's there, if it were our ordinance, maybe, but it's not, it's theirs.
But, but the other factor is too, I think they gotta be able to be, put some teeth in it somewhere that if, if an event happens and a vendor doesn't have a license, and he knows he's supposed to have a license.
Again, that's, that's up to them, because we can't even control the, the event itself. We, we can tell them that, that the, the vendors are supposed to have a food truck license, but we can't enforce that in any way, shape or form.
But you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
What's good for the goose is good for the gander, and we played that all summer long last year. He's not around on weekends. I mean, uh, but no, I'm just saying. That's why I was asking the question. I mean, uh. No, I mean, somebody who wanted to run a hot dog stand, they're fine. I mean, that's a small unit, but when you got the food trucks just coming in and going.
Okay. Any other business, Mr. Planner?
No, sir. Uh, you'll see something coming. I can't say shortly, I do know it's being worked on.
About the tennis courts?
I haven't heard anything.
Okay, I move that to your turn.
Second.